Hello and welcome to study session twenty of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will see first. Supply under GST page number twenty-three to thirty-one, we will see round four of that. And then we will see round three of page number seventy-three to seventy-five of the same chapter. So that will get us. This chapter completed for three rounds, supply under GST. And then we will go to yesterday's target of page number fourteen to eighteen, we will revise it for the second time. And then we will read the today's quota of five to six fresh pages after that. Okay, so let us start with round four, page number twenty-three. Before that, I almost forgot, let us do the daily study session, pre-study session intention. Now I am going to study for thirty-two sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty-two sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is to not achieve perfection. It is to make a tiny bit of progress in the next thirty-two sixty minutes. So let us begin. Thus, business includes any activity or transaction which is incidental or ancillary to any trade, commerce, manufacture, profession, vocation, adventure. wager or bet or any other similar activity. In addition, any activity undertaken by the central government or a state government or any local authority in which. They are engaged as public authority shall also be construed as business. For any trade, commerce or any other similar activity to qualify as business. Frequency, volume, continuity or regularity of such transaction or obtaining pecuniary benefit from. It is not a prerequisite. Okay, Rishabh buys a car for his personal use and after a year sells it to a car dealer. The sale of car by Rishabh to the car dealer is not a supply under CGST because. The said supply is not made by Rishabh in the course or furtherance of business. Manikarn Nika sold her old gold bangles and earrings to Abhushan jewelers. Sale of old gold jewelry by an individual to a jeweler will not constitute supply. As the same cannot be said to be in the course or furtherance of business of the individual. Since business includes vocation, thus therefore supply of goods or service as a vocation is also supply under GST. Sundaram Acharya, a famous actor, paints some paintings and sells them. The consideration from such sale is to be donated to a charitable trust kind human. The sale paint, the sale of paintings by the actor qualifies as supply as it is made in the course or furtherance of business. Facility is provided by the club or association to its members for consideration or provided in the course or furtherance of business. Resident welfare association provides the service of depositing the electricity bills of residents uh against some nominal charges. Provisions of service by provision of service by a club or association or society to its members. Is included in the definition of business. Admission of persons to any premises for a consideration is also included in business. Services by way of admission to circus, cinema halls, amusement parks, including theme parks, water parks, etc. Are considered as a supply as these are services by way of admission of persons to any premises for a consideration. Business includes activities of a race club, including by way of totalizer or a license to bookmaker. Or activities of a licensed bookmaker in such club. Royal Turf Race Club is engaged in facilitating the wagering or betting transactions on horses. Placed through totalizer. For providing the service of facilitating wagering transactions. Royal Turf Race Club gets commission which is deducted and retained by the club from the total bet value. Said service services amount to supply as the activities of a race club are included in business. There is one exception to this course or furtherance of business rule, that is import of services for a consideration. From the above discussion, it can be inferred that if an activity or transaction satisfies all the above parameters. As discussed in points A, B and C above, said activity or transaction qualifies as supply under GST. In the subsequent paras, we have discussed the exceptions to the two parameters of supply namely. Supply made for consideration but not in course or furtherance of business and supply made without consideration. Importation of sub- services for consideration whether or not in the course or furtherance of business. The connotation of supply gets expanded significantly through the second part of section seven, that is seven subsection one class B. Which brings within the ambit of supply, the importation of services for a consideration, whether or not in the course or furtherance of business. This is the only exception to the condition of supply being made in the course or furtherance of business. Ramaya, a proprietor, has received the architect services for his personal residence from an architect located in New York. At an agreed consideration of five thousand. The import of services by Ramaya is supply under seven subsection one class B. Though it is not in the course or furtherance of business. Now let us talk about deemed supply, the activities that are without consideration still called as deemed supply. Para number one, permanent transfer or disposal of business assets where input tax credit has been available on such assets. Supply of goods or services or both between related persons or between distinct persons as specified in section twenty-five. When made in the course or furtherance of business. Provided that gifts not exceeding fifty thousand rupees in value in a financial year by an employer to an employee. Shall not be treated as supply of goods or services or both. Supply of goods by a principal to his agent where the agent undertakes to supply such goods on behalf of principal. Or by an agent to his principal where the agent undertakes to receive such goods on behalf of the principal. Import of services by a person from a related person or from any other establishments outside India. In the course or furtherance of business. So you have to understand that. All these cons- all these transactions, all these activities would have been carried out without consideration. So the basic assumption is these things would have been carried out without consideration. So even if they are carried without consideration. It will still be deemed as supply. So you should not worry about whether import of services by a person from a related person. So you can't worry like, okay, without consideration is deemed to supply. So what is with consideration? So with consideration, there is not even question. If it is with consideration and if it is in the course or furtherance of business, it is going to be called as supply. So it gets covered in the basic definition itself. In this situation, all these four activities are activities deemed as supply and deemed as supply. Even if they are done without consideration. So let us go to the analysis part. As seen earlier, section seven subsection one class C provides that. Supply includes the activity specified in schedule one, made or agreed to be made without a consideration. Thus, there are activities or transactions which are treated as supply even if they are made without consideration. These are specifically mentioned in schedule number one appended to the GST act CGST act. Okay, in the past indirect tax regime, in every statute, consideration played the most important role for living taxes. For instance, if any service was provided for free to a person, such service was not subject to service tax. However, under GST, the condition of consideration has been dispensed with in certain cases. This is an important departure from the earlier indirect tax regime. As per schedule one, in the following four cases, activities made without consideration will be treated as supply under section seven. Permanent transfer or disposal of business assets, para one of schedule one. Any kind of disposal or transfer of business assets made by an entity on permanent basis. Even though without consideration qualifies as supply. However, it is important to note that. This provision would apply only if input tax credit has been available on such assets. Therefore, in order to qualify as supply under this para, following conditions must have been satisfied. There must be a disposal or transfer of business assets. Transfer or disposal must be permanent. Input tax credit must have been available on such business assets. In view of the last condition stipulated above, permanent transfer or disposal of following business assets without consideration. Will not be covered within this para and thus will not be deemed as supply. Business assets on which I T C is blocked or not available under GST. So already I T C is blocked, therefore uh you are not going to be called as supply when you dispose it off without consideration. Business assets, though eligible for I T C, I T C has not been available by the registered person. In that situation also, it will not be called as supply. Dhruv gives old laptops being used in his business to his friend free of cost. This will qualify as supply provided input tax credit has been available by Dhruv on such laptops. A dealer of air conditioners permanently transfers the motor vehicle free of cost. I T C on said motor vehicle is blocked. The transaction will not constitute a supply. As the condition of availability of I T C on the business asset transferred is not fulfilled. Okay. This clause is wide enough to cover transfer of business assets from holding company to subsidiary company for nil consideration. Okay, supply between a related person or distinct persons, para two of schedule one. Supply of goods or services or both between related persons or between distinct persons as specified in section twenty-five. Will qualify as supply even if made without consideration, provided it is made in the course or furtherance of business. Let us understand the terms relate related persons and distinct persons. Related persons, a person who is under influence or another influence of another person is called related person. Like members of the same family or subsidiaries of a group company. Under GST law, various categories of related persons have been specified. The term related person has been defined in explanation to section fifteen. The said definition has been depicted by way of a diagram as follows. Persons including legal person are deemed as related persons if such persons are officers, directors of one another, one another's business. Such persons are legally considered legally recognized partners. Such persons are employer and employee. A third person controls, owns, holds directly or indirectly, greater than or equal to twenty-five percentage voting stock or shares of both of them. One of them controls the other directly or indirectly. A third person controls directly or indirectly both of them. Such persons together control a third person directly or indirectly. Such persons are members of the same family. One of them is the sole, sole agent, sole distributor or sole concessioner of the other. Miss Priya holds thirty percentage shares of A B C Limited and thirty-five percentage of shares. Of X Y Z Limited, A B C Limited and X Y Z Limited are related. Q Limited has a deciding role in corporate policy, operations management and quality control of R Limited. It can be said that Q Limited controls R Limited, Q and R are related. Distinct persons specified under section twenty-five. Before we go through the statutory provisions of distinct persons, let us first have. An overview of the registration provisions for better understanding of the concept of distinct persons. Detailed and in-depth analysis of the registration provisions is contained in chapter nine. Okay, under GST law, a supplier is required to obtain statewide registration. He has to obtain registration in every state or union territory from where he makes a taxable supply. Provided his aggregate turnover exceeds a specified threshold limit. Thus, he is not required to obtain registration from a state where he makes a non-taxable supply. Since registration in GST is pan-based, once a supplier is liable to register. He has to obtain registration in each of the state or union territories. In which he operates and makes a taxable supply under same pan. Further, he is normally required to obtain single registration in a state or union territory. However, where he has multiple places of business in a state, he can get a single registration for the said state. He may also get a separate registration for any place of business in such state. Now let us understand the concept of distinct persons in simple terms. The establishment of a person with the separate registrations, whether within the same state or union territory. Okay, so I I will just quickly summarize this um until here. Stock transfer, we will start from tomorrow. What are they go, what are we going, what have we seen the last three rounds? Let us say a person can have. Single registration within a single state if he has only one place of operation. Now let us say within the same state, a person has two places of operations. Let's say I have a business. One factory is in Chennai and I also have another factory in Madurai. So. I can normally have a single GST registration for both of these premises. But in case I decide to have two separate GST registrations for Chennai office as well as Madurai office. And if I make supply or stock transfer between these two offices. If I make services or goods supply between these two places, thus the transfer will be considered as supply. But if I am having only one registration, single registration, but I have it for two places. For let's say Chennai office as well as Madurai branch. And if I still make stock transfer between these two places. Even if they are distinct persons, they will not be treated as supply. So this is what they have given here. And then another example, let's say I have two premises, one is in Tamil Nadu and the other one is in Andhra Pradesh. In that situation, let's say I have one office in Chennai and the other factory is in Nellur. And if I transfer from Chennai to Nellur, obviously the Nellur factory is in a separate state. So they have to get separate registration. So obviously, whatever the transfer that we do between these two offices or factories. Will be deemed as supply even without consideration, it will be deemed as supply because they are establishments of different persons. So you have to make sure if there a question has interstate supply, so obviously the registration has to be multiple. So you have to consider it as supply, but if the state, if the supply is within the state. You have to see whether there is a single registration or multiple registration in that situation, uh single registration, no supply. Multiple registration, yes, supply. Okay, so on that note, we have completed the first target for the day. Which is round four until page number thirty-one. Now let us go to page number seventy-three, seventy-three seventy-four, a couple of pages where we will do the last round of. Uh, round three of. La- last few pages of round three, okay, mixer supply. Mixer supply means two or more individual supplies of goods or services or any two com- or any combination thereof. Made in conjunction with each other by a taxable person for a single price. Where such supply does not constitute a composite supply. Section two class seventy-four, individual supplies are independent of each other and are not naturally bundled. How to determine if a particular supply is a mixer supply? In order to identify if the particular supply is a mixer supply, the first requisite is to rule out that the supply is a composite supply. A supply can be a mixer supply only if it is not a composite supply. As a coro- as a corollary, it can be said that if the transaction consists of supplies not naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business. Then the possibility of it being a mixer supply needs to be checked. Once the amenability of the transaction as a composite supply is ruled out. And the single consideration is charged for the entire supply of different components, it would be treated as a mixer supply. Classified in terms of supply of goods or services attracting highest rate of tax. A supply of package consisting of canned foods, sweets, chocolates, cakes, dry fruits, aerated drink and fruit juices. When supplied for a single price is a mixer supply. Each of these items can be supplied separately and is not dependent on each other. It shall be a mixer supply if these items are supplied separately or separate. It shall not be a mixer supply if these items are supplied separately or and or separate prices are charged. A shopkeeper selling storage water bottles along with refrigerator for a single price. Bottles and the refrigerator can be easily be priced and sold independently. And are not naturally bundled. So such supplies are mixer supplies. A house with, a house is given on rent through a single rented aid. One floor of which is to be used as residence and the other house, other for housing a printing press at a lumpsam rent amount. Such renting for two different purposes is not naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business. Said supplies are mixer supply. How to determine the tax liability on mixer supplies? A mixer supply comprising of two or more supplies shall be treated as. Supply of that particular supply that attracts highest rate of tax. Shringar Enterprises supplies ten thousand kits at fifty each, mounting to five lakh rupees to Ragav General Store. Each kit consists of one shampoo, one face wash and one casual pencil. It is a mixer supply and is treated as supply of that particular supply which attracts highest tax rate. Assuming that the rate, rate of tax applicable on shampoo is eighteen percentage on face wash, it is twenty, twenty-eight percentage. And on casual pencil, it is twelve percentage. In the given case, highest tax rate that is of face wash of twenty-eight percentage. Will be charged on the entire value of five lakhs. More than one supply made together and taxed at the individual rates. There can also be a case where an activity or transaction involves more than one sup- more than one supply of goods or services or both. But neither they are composite supplies nor they can be categorized as mixer supplies. That is, all supplies carry independent significance. In such a case, if separate consideration is indicated against each supply. Each such supply shall be charged at a respective rate. Applicable to that particular supply. In case of servicing of cars involving supply of both goods. Spare parts and services where the value of goods and the services are shown separately. The goods and services would be liable to tax at the rates as applicable to such goods and services separately. Jaskaran Supplies gift packages at thirty rupees each to its customers. Each package consists of two chocolates, two fruit juice bottles and a packet of toy balloons. Rates of GST applicable on chocolates, fruit juice bottles and toy balloons are. Eighteen percentage, twelve percentage and five percentage respectively. Jaskaran is liable to pay GST at what rate? At eighteen percentage because he is selling it as a single. Uh, thing, single package and he is charging a single concentration at a flat of thirty rupees. But he is having multiple items inside the package with the different GST rates. So pick the highest tax rate. Okay, on that note, we have concluded our second segment as well. Let us go to the third segment which is around two of page number fourteen to page number eighteen, more definitions. Charge of GST. Page number fourteen to eighteen, okay, so yeah, this is analysis part, okay, right? Okay, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, we read till here yesterday. We will start from here and maybe we will go on. Yeah, till here, we will complete this fourteenth point. Maybe if the things that, if things get a little early. We can read. Yeah, we can probably finish till seven twenty-seven also. Yeah, because these are just tabular columns, I think we can run through them a bit quickly, let us see anyway. Round two of whatever we read yesterday. CGST shall be levied on all intrastate supplies of goods or services or both. The tax shall be collected in such manner as may be prescribed and shall be paid by the taxable person. However, intrastate supply of alcoholic liquor for human consumption is outside the purview of CGST. Value for levy, transaction value under section fifteen of the CGST act, so that will be the value for levy. Rates of CGST are rates as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the GST council. Maximum rate of CGST can be twenty percentage. In case of interstate supplies of goods or services in IGST is levied on the transaction value under section fifteen of the IGST act, I think. Since alcoholic liquor for human consumption is outside the purview of GST, IGST is also not leviable on the same. IGST is the sum total of CGST and SGST, the maximum rate of IGST can be forty percentage, okay? However, CGST or IGST on supply of the following items has not yet been levied. It shall be levied with effect from such date as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. Petroleum, crude, high-speed diesel, motor spirit, commonly known as petrol, natural gas and aviation turbine fuel. Tax payable on supply of goods or services are both under reverse charge. CGST or IGST shall be paid by the recipient of goods or services or both on reverse charge basis in the following cases. Supply of goods, supply of such goods or services are both as notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. Supply of specified categories of goods or services are both. By an unregistered supply to specified class of registered persons as notified by the government. On recommendation of the council. All the provisions of the CGST or IGST act shall apply to the recipient in the afforded. Cases as if he is the person liable for paying the tax in relation to the supply of such goods or services or both. Let us understand reverse charge mechanism. Generally, the supplier of goods or services is liable to pay GST. However, under the reverse charge mechanism. The liability to pay GST is cast on the recipient of the goods or services. Reverse charge means the liability to pay tax is on the recipient of supply of goods or services. Instead of the supplier of such goods or services in respect of notified categories of supply to clause ninety-eight. It may be noted that the underlying principle of an indirect tax is that burden of tax has to be ultimately passed on to the recipient. GST being an indirect tax, this principle holds good for GST. Under normal circumstances, the statutory liability to deposit GST and undertake compliance. Is on the supplier while he may recover the same from its recipient. However, under reverse charge mechanism. The statutory liability to deposit GST and undertaking compliance requirements shifts from supplier to recipient. There are two types of reverse charge scenarios provided in law. First scenario occurs in case of supply of specified categories of goods or services. Covered by section nine class subsection three of CGST SGST act. Similar provisions are contained under section five three of IGST act. Second scenario occurs in case of supply of specified categories of goods or services made by. An unregistered supplier to specified class of registered recipients. Okay, goods and services notified under this case have been discussed subsequently in this chapter. Okay, goods and services notified under reverse charge mechanism. Under section nine subsection three, under section, section five subsection three of IGST act. Are as follows, supply of goods taxable under reverse charge. Goods like cashew nuts not shelled or peeled, BD wrapper leaves, tobacco leaves and raw cotton. When supplied by an agriculturist to any person, supply of lottery when supplied by state government, union territory. Or any local authority to lottery distributor or selling agent, silk yarn when supplied by manufacturer of silk yarn. To any registered person. Used vehicles, seized and confiscated goods, old and used goods, waste and scrap. When supplied by central government, state government, union territory or any local authority to any registered person. Priority sector lending certificate when supplied by registered person to any registered person, all these are taxable under reverse charge. Now let us talk about supply of services taxable under reverse charge under section nine subsection three. Now let us talk about supply of services taxable under reverse charge under section nine subsection three of the CGST Act. Services where taxes payable by the recipient. As amended has, okay, notification number thirteen. As amended has notified the following categories of supply of services wherein whole of the tax shall be paid on reverse charge basis. Okay, first is supply of services by a GTA in respect of transportation of goods by road to any factory, any society. Cooperative society, any person registered under GST Act. Any body corporate established by any other law, any partnership firm where whether registered or not. Under any law, including association of person, any casual taxable person, supplier of services, goods, GTA. And then again the same thing they have repeated, factory, society, cooperative society. Registered person under GST registered person and then body corporate partnership whether registered or not under any law. Including association of persons. Okay, so these are all the services, goods transport service. However, reverse charge mechanism shall not apply to services provided by a GTA by way of transport of goods in a goods carriage by road. To department or establishment of the central government, state government or union territory. Or local authority or governmental agencies which has taken registration under CGST. Only for the purpose of deducting tax under section fifty one and not for making a taxable supply of goods or services. Further, nothing contained in this in this entry shall be applied, shall apply. Where the supplier has taken registration under the CGST Act and exercised. The option to pay tax on the services of GTA in relation to transport of. Goods supplied by him under forward charge. The supplier has issued a tax invoice to the recipient, charging GST at the applicable rates. And has made the prescribed declaration on such invoice issued by him. So in this case, if the GTA has taken registration and exercised the option to pay tax. On the services of GTA relation to transport of goods, if the GTA himself has registered as. Registered with an option voluntarily say that I will make the payment like a forward regular forward charge mechanism itself. Uh and the supplier has whenever he charges any invoice to the person who have avail the. The transport services from him and in that invoice if he specifically mentions about GST. Then the forward charge mechanism will come. Okay, now we will go to the newer points, we have completed this also. Yesterday's quote also, so we have come to the today's fresh target of. Page number nineteen to mostly page number twenty seven. Services provided by an individual advocate, including a senior advocate or firm of advocates by way of legal services directly or indirectly. Legal service means any service provided in relation to advice consultancy or assistance in any branch of law. In any manner and includes representational services before any court, tribunal or authority. An individual advocate, including a senior advocate or a firm of advocates, any business entity located in taxable territory. So it has to be a business entity, okay, services supplied by an arbitral tribunal to a business entity, okay? Services provided by way of sponsorship to any body corporate or partnership firm, any person. Any body corporate or partnership firm located in the taxable territory. By way of sponsorship, so I am wondering if this will, if YouTubers will get covered by this because. Services provided by way of sponsorship to anybody corporate or partnership firm, so let's say in my channel I. Talk about a brand, so in that situation because it is given any person, so it means it could mean me. If I am providing a sponsorship service to a particular brand and if I am charging invoice to them. The firm to which I am providing the sponsorship service looks like they have to pay GST based on reverse charge. Okay, services supplied by the central government, state government, union territory or local authority to a business entity excluding. Services supplied by the central government, state government or union territory, local authority to a business entity excluding. Renting of immobile property and services specified below. Services by the Department of Posts and the Ministry of Railways in services. Services in relation to the aircraft, a vessel or inside or outside the precincts of a port or an airport. Transport of goods or passengers, okay, here. Central government, state government, unit territory, local authority, any business entity located in the taxable territory. But excluding, they are giving excluding, so renting of immobile property, so if a person. Hires the property belonging to central government. If a business entity takes rent off a government property. And government will charge rent towards the business enterprise and they will make the payment, I think in that situation. The government itself will charge GST and government itself will pay GST to itself. Looks like that because reverse charge will not apply, they are saying no, so excluding. And then services by postal department, railways department. And then services in relation to an aircraft or a vessel inside or outside the airport and then transport of goods or passengers. Okay, next point, services supplied by central government excluding. The Ministry of Railways, State Government, Union Territory or. Central government, state government, union territory or railways by way of renting immobile property to a person registered under. CGST Act. Okay, so this will also attract reverse charge mechanism, so the person if the person is. A registered person under GST and if again if he takes rental of immobile property. From central government, state government, union territory government, local authority, then reverse charge will apply. Okay, so they have specifically excluded this. And then they have included GST registered people. Okay, I am kind of understanding this, anyway, anyway, proceed, let's proceed. Services by way of renting of residential dwelling to a registered person, any person, GST is to be paid by the registered person. Services by way of renting of any immobile property other than residential dwelling, so commercial property. Any registered person, unregistered person, GST to be paid by registered person. Services supplied by a director of a company or body corporate. To the set company or body corporate, the director of body corporate is the provider of service. Company or body corporate located in the taxable territory will have to pay GST. Services supplied by an insurance agent to any person carrying on insurance business. An insurance agent is the provider of supply but they don't have to pay tax, any person carrying on insurance business located in the taxable territory, okay? So the insurance company has to remit GST. Okay, services supplied by a recovery agent to a banking company or financial institution or in BFC. Recovery agent, banking company, financial institution, so in this situation, banking company or the financial institution has to pay tax. Supply of services by a music composer, photographer, artist or the like. By way of transfer or permitting the use or enjoyment of copyright covered under section thirteen subsection one clause A of the Copyright Act. Relating to original dramatic musical or artistic work to a music company producer and the like. So music composer, photographer, artist or the like and the services is provided to music company producer. Or the like in the taxable territory, okay? Supply of services by an author by way of transfer or permitting the use or enjoyment of a copyright. Under section thirteen subsection one clause A of the Copyright Act relating to the original literary works. To a publisher, author is the provider of service, publisher located in the taxable territory. However, an author can choose to pay tax under forward charge if he has taken registration under CGST. And filed a declaration in the prescribed form that he exercises the option to pay CGST on the set service under forward charge in accordance with. Section nine subsection one and to comply and to comply with all the provisions as they apply to a person liable for paying tax. In relation to the supply of any goods and or services and that. He shall not withdraw the said option within a period of one year from the date of exercising such option. He makes a declaration, if he makes a declaration on the invoice issued by him in the prescribed form to the publisher, okay? Supply of services by the members of, supply of services by members of overseeing committee to the RBA. So in this case, RBA has to pay the tax, okay, supply, services supplied by individual direct selling agents other than a body corporate. Other than a body corporate partnership or a limited liability firm to a bank or a non-banking financial institution. So individual direct selling agent other than a body corporate. And the recipient is banking company, so the banking company will have to remit GST. Services provided by business facilitator to a banking company, business facilitator is the provider, they don't have to do. Banking company has to remit GST. Services provided by an agent correspondent to a business correspondent. Agent of business correspondent to a business correspondent, so agent need not pay tax, business correspondent need to pay tax. Security services provided by way of supply of security personnel to a registered person. However, nothing contained in this entry shall apply to department or establishment of the central government or state government or union territory. Local authority, governmental agencies which has taken registration under the CGST Act only for the purpose of. Deducting tax under section fifty one of the said act, not making a supply, not making a taxable supply of goods or services. So generally, security agencies need not remit tax. But if they supply security services to these customers. Then these customers need not remit GST, in that case, forward uh charging only will apply. Similarly, a security services provided to a registered person paying tax under composition scheme, again it will be. Forward charging mechanism will activate, okay? Services provided by way of renting of any motor vehicle designed to carry passengers. Where the cost of fuel is included in the consideration, charged from the recipient, provided to a body corporate. Services by way of renting of any motor vehicle designed to carry passengers. Where the cost of fuel is included in the consideration, charged from the service recipient, provided to a body corporate. Okay, any person other than a body corporate who supplies service to a body corporate and doesn't in issue invoice. Charging CGST at six percentage to service recipient, any body corporate located in the taxable territory. Okay, so again, this doesn't look so clear to me, but anyway, I am just noting it down. Okay, sixteenth point, services of lending of securities under Securities Lending Scheme nineteen ninety seven. And Securities and Exchange Board of India has amended lender that is a person who deposits securities registered in his name. Or in the name of any other person duly authorized on his behalf. With an approved or intermediary for the purpose of the lending under scheme of SEBI. In this case borrower, that is a person who borrows the securities under the scheme through any approved intermediary of SEB, okay? Fine. All the above services have also been notified for reverse charge under IGST, wide notification number ten. Uh of dated twenty eight six two thousand seventeen as amended. In addition to them, following service is also notified by the said notification under reverse charge for IGST purposes. Okay, any service supplied by any person who is located in a non-taxable territory to any person located in the taxable territory. Other than non-taxable online recipient located in taxable territory, thus in case import of service. Tax is payable by the person importing such service. For purpose of the notification notifying the above services under reverse charge mechanism, following explanations shall apply. The person who pays or is liable to pay freight for the transportation of goods by roads. Road in goods carriage located in the taxable territory shall be treated as the person who receives. The service for the purpose of this notification, okay? Body corporate, body corporate has the same meaning as assigned to it in clause eleven of section two of the Companies Act two thousand thirteen. As per section two clause eleven of the Companies Act, body corporate or corporation includes a company incorporated outside India. But does not include a cooperative society at any other body corporate. Not being a company as defined in this act which the central government may by notification specify in this behalf. Okay, the business entity located in the taxable territory who is litigant, applicant or petitioner as the case may be. Shall be treated as the person who receives the legal services for the purposes of this notification. The words and expressions used and not defined in reverse charge notification but defined in the CGST Act. The IGST Act and the UTGST Act shall have the same meanings as assigned to them in those acts, okay? Limited liability partnership formed and registered under the provisions of the LLP Act shall also be considered as a partnership firm. Or a firm, okay? Insurance agents means an agent licensed under section forty two of the Insurance Act who receives agrees. Who receives agrees to receive payment by way of commission or other remuneration in consideration of his soliciting or procuring. Insurance business, including business relating to the continuance, renewal or revival of policies of insurance. Renting of immobile property means allowing, permitting or granting access, entry, occupation, use or any such facility. Wholly or partly in an immobile property with or without the transfer of possession. Or control of the said immobile property and includes letting, leasing, licensing or other similar arrangements. In respect of immobile property. Okay, the provisions of reverse charge notification in so far as they apply to the central government, state government shall also apply to. Parliament, state legislature, courts and tribunals. Okay, so on that note, we will wrap up today's study session. Looks like the rest of the chapter is all about. Explaining the reverse charge in much detail, I think, yeah, you can see here, they have explained the GTA service. And they have explained the remuneration paid to the director. Okay, so that is a segment and then you have classification under GST. The HSN code they would have given and then composition levy, what is composition scheme? Okay, composition scheme. Now you have illustrations, okay? Lots of new provisions from what I studied in my CA days. Oh, looks like this composition scheme itself is pretty long, yeah, so with the. With just the composition scheme, they have completed this chapter, so I thought there will be more concepts, so nothing like that, so. This composition levy itself is going to be a quite huge, you know, portion in this big chapter. Anyway, let's keep the process, we have completed till page number twenty seven. So we have completed till here, we will revise this again tomorrow and then we will proceed from here maybe six to seven pages. Uh tomorrow, new pages. On that note, let me note down today's progress till page number three point two seven. Twenty third October twenty twenty five, task completed. Thank you for joining on that note, I will see you tomorrow on study session twenty one. Study well the rest of the day, I will see you tomorrow, bye bye.